Let's go ahead and call this meeting to order and we'll go ahead and start with invocation and then our pledge of allegiance by our city manager.
Let's bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we ask that you bless every person affected by Hurricane Harvey. Please be with the rescue workers and keep them safe as they respond to people's assistance. We also ask that you bless our children, our teachers, our staff as they begin a new school year. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Electoletus of the flag of the United States of America into the Republic for which stands one nation under God indelicious before all.
We have the Chamber of Commerce report. The Chamber of Commerce.
I will begin with recent events that we've had at the Chamber of Commerce. On Thursday, August 17th, we hosted our Leadership Game Night with one of our members, Dream Big Facility. We had 12 members in attendance and we had some good leadership development fund. In the future, we will have these on a quarterly basis. Next, on Tuesday, August 22nd, we hosted our first workshop in over two years at the Chamber titled Financial Statement Analysis with UTRGV Small Business Development Center. We had 16 people in attendance to attend the workshop from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Last Thursday, on August 24th, we hosted our Partnership Business Mixer with RG Vision Mixer. We honored one of our members, Mike and Nick Rhodes, Rhodes Enterprises. The event benefited another member of ours, Teach for America. We had over 250 people in attendance at Bob's Steakhouse. In terms of upcoming events, on Thursday, September 7th, we have our, we have the Raising Canes Ribbon Cutting. It'll begin at 9:00 a.m. and the location for that is 125 South Sherry Road off of Sherry. Next, we have our Buenos Aires Luncheon, which is going to occur on September 14th, 2017, from 11:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at Simron Country Club. We have a UTPA alumni as our keynote speaker, Mr. Javier Palomares, and we certainly look for the City Council and the Mayor to be in attendance for that. I'm excited to announce, we partnered up with Texas Workforce Solutions and we're going to be having our, what's titled a Texas Hireability Employer Symposium Luncheon. We're going to be educating our members and employers on what it takes to bring somebody onboard, a potential employee who may have disabilities. And that'll be on October 4th from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Lastly, we have our 2017 Annual Banquet, which will be held on Thursday, October 19th, 2017, and that'll begin at 6:00 p.m. and it'll conclude at 9:00 p.m. and we will have it at Mario's Banquet and Conference Center. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next item is the Department's report. You have them in your packet. If you all have any questions, don't hesitate to ask us now.
Move for approval as presented?
Second, Mayor.
We have a motion and a second to approve the reports. As presented, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. We have citizens' participation. Anybody from the audience that would like to address the council not having anything to do with our agenda? Go ahead. Hollis? Hollis Rodlich?
Mayor, members of the council?
I wonder what you want now.
We're here for a very good reason. We have members, they can come up, and Sheila, and Monty, everybody.
Virginia?
Virginia. Mr. Thompson. We have a special presentation, a surprise for you, Mayor. You're not aware of it, but we've been talking about it for quite some time. And I know that over the several years, you have been a watchdog for the taxpayers of this county, including, of course, the City of Mission. We're very proud of the fact that you have stepped up to the plate, one of the very few elected officials that have stepped up to the plate and being a champion for taxpayers in Idaho County. As a result of that, you may remember that there was a ad that was placed in the monitor. But all of us agreed that it backfired at their expense because it actually articulated our position a lot stronger than had anticipated. And as a result of that, we saved that ad. And we would like to present it to you now. We would like to present you this honor because it is an honor. We think it was a special occasion in which you were probably the only elected official to step up to the plate on behalf of the taxpayers. And as a result, we thought it was appropriate to recognize your efforts on behalf of the taxpayers of Idaho County and the city in representing our interests. And with that in mind, we'd like to see if you could come over to us and we'd like to present it to you, if you don't mind.
Thank you.
This is a, this is an ad that was actually placed, some of you may remember, in the monitor, and it's called "The Three Amigos." It has Cantu, Trump, and Salinas in it. And it had to do with Mayor Salinas' opposition against the Special Hospital District. And we saved it because we actually thought that it was amusing, that it was humorous, and that it actually backfired on them, as it did, not only once, but twice. So, the actual frame here says, "We'd like to present the Three Amigos Award to Mayor Beto Salinas, Champion of Taxpayers." Mayor?
I know that there was a long battle about trying to defeat the money that they had on trying to create a special district to raise $265 million. Actually, that was the real reason why they were spending so much money. And thank God that he was the one responsible for helping us defeat them and bringing so many people out to vote. God has always come through for us and when I campaigned this race, this election, I felt very alone because none of the elected officials wanted to support me and help me because they thought that we were going to get defeated. But when we saw those numbers at the second race, it was just so many people against it. And I hope they can understand, they have to go back to the county and they have to get the money out of the tax levy that they have already and get it from there. Don't create a new one. You already have a tax rate where you can get the money from... See, but they didn't want to get themselves blamed for borrowing or raising the taxes and borrowing the money. They wanted to blame somebody else. But they can very easily get the money there at, it only takes four votes, five votes. Three can go ahead and get whatever they want. If they want to get, if they want 200 million, they can get it from there. But they wanted to create a special district and it was going to be a runaway, runaway tax levy. We want them to find money for the indigent and till this day, they have not appropriated one more penny. They have $3 million and they can afford 50 million right now. If they won't stop throwing the money away, they get 46 million dollars from the government every year, 46 million from the urban county designation that we created back in 1984. We started with 6 million, they had 46 million. They can easily find the money there, but they have not done one thing to appropriate more money to help the people that don't have insurance. So, thank you guys for this. I think this was a big mistake they made. And it really caught everybody's attention and what this picture did to the voters, they told them that there was an election and reminded everybody that they needed to go out and vote. They should have never done this picture. I mean, they had a lot of people that didn't know how to run elections then, but this is not a good thing to do to your opposition.
Mayor, before you go, we have had our sombrero for you. It says, "Mayor Roberto Beto Salinas, one of our three amigos presented by the elves," and I put the date that we won and the number, in case you forget. It's 111,822 people voted no to another tax on their property.
Yeah, this was wonderful.
So, we're very proud of you being our amigo.
Thank you so much. Well, thank you all very much and I didn't expect that. And I thought that we had already forgotten about the race, but it's good to remind people that there's always a possibility that they might want to do it again. And we are ready to do it again whenever they want to. It really helped me with this race countywide to make a run for the county judges always, but I just don't like their position at all, especially with all the debt they have. It's very hard to go in there and try to run a county the way they have for the last 10 years. We are going to move to another, we're going to move from item 1.1 to 4.1. It's a resolution that we have and we want to get this out of the way so I know some of you want to see what we're going to do with this resolution and once we get this one over with, then we go back to take care of our regular business in the county, in the city.
Mayor, Council, good afternoon. This is, I'll be reading the resolution in its entirety.
Yeah, read the whole resolution, so.
This is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Mission, Texas, in opposition to building border infrastructure, including walls, levees, or fences along the U.S.-Mexico border. Whereas since the City of Mission was founded in 1908, the La Lomita Chapel has been and continues to be a defining feature of our community and the proposed border wall will isolate the La Lomita Chapel from the community that is named in honor of this historic landmark. Whereas the National Butterfly Center, the World Birding Center headquarters, and Brenton Rio Grande Valley State Park are essential attractions to maintain our revenue from ecotourism as well as providing local families with quality places for wholesome recreation and enjoyment. In addition, our children would lose vital outdoor classroom experiences that provide hands-on learning opportunities that cannot be found anywhere else. Whereas many winter Texans choose Mission, Texas, over other locations for our unique attractions, the seasonal revenues and taxes generated by this group of people will decrease significantly as some of the most popular RV parks, restaurants, and attractions will be south of the proposed wall. With limited to no access to these main attractions, it will significantly change our ability to successfully recruit and retain this group of seasonal visitors that are an important component to the economic health of our community. Whereas we must prevent our treasured resources from becoming isolated from the greater Mission community by a border wall or fence. And whereas the communities in Idaho County consistently rank among the safest in the United States, an additional border infrastructure would do nothing to improve the effectiveness of deterrence. Security or any other justification used for the construction of the wall would instead negatively impact the local economy by detracting hundreds of thousands of yearly visitors to the aforementioned tourist attractions. Whereas the allocated resources for the infrastructure would be better utilized by providing more cost-effective methods of enforcing immigration policies such as technology and additional personnel. Whereas the proposed border wall will levy hundreds of thousands of acres of U.S. land on the other side of the wall, severely impacting the highest and best use for the property. The border wall would cut off large swathes of land and divide privately-owned property, much of which has been owned by families for generations, and further caused devaluation of all properties along the border. Whereas any method devised to pay for such a border wall may require up to $25 billion U.S. taxpayer funds or subsidies supported by an import tariff or border tax on Mexican goods imported to the U.S. or U.S. goods entering Mexico, resulting in a trade war, which leads to market instability in terms of job creation, economic development, substantial increases in the cost of goods passed to consumers, and a negative cultural impact. And whereas the wall would cause serious environmental damage to the ecotourism ecosystem of the Rio Grande Valley by increasing emissions, cutting off natural water flows, and disturbing wildlife migration routes. Now therefore, be it resolved that on this, the 28th day of August, 2017, the City Council of the City of Mission, Texas hereby expresses opposition to the construction of any border walls, levees, or fences along the U.S.-Mexico border and further denounces the expenditure of federal funds for said purpose. And let it be further resolved that the City Council urges the President of the United States of America and the United States Congress to reconsider the use of taxpayer money for border infrastructure and instead utilize the allocated resources to provide more cost-effective methods of enforcing immigration policies such as technology and additional personnel, which would create jobs and stimulate the region as opposed to the negative effects associated with the wall. Passed and approved by the City Council on this, the 28th day of August, 2017, and Mayor, this would be Resolution 1520.
1520.
A move for approval, Mayor?
Second.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 1520. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much for coming to this meeting and in the support of this resolution, so. We now go and move on to our public hearings that we have. And our first one would be 1.1A. Mr. Acevedo?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1A is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for home occupation of a licensed home daycare at 2114 West 42nd and a Half Street, being Lot 12, Torres Estates, Number 9, Phase 2 subdivision. The property is owned R1 and the applicant is Salina Garcia. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance on August 9, 2017.
Let's go ahead and wait until we get some of these people.
I added another slide if you need it. Just to cut off, it's one of those, it's not on there. But it's to cut off, as you know, the public hearings with ready drawings. Okay, okay. On August 9, 2017, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is located near the Anita Street and 47 and a Half Street intersection along the north side of 42nd and a Half Street. This is a CUP that was granted about 12 months ago and she's been in operation for 12 months now. She operates a home daycare with one other employee helping her out. We did make a call to PD. There's been no incidents at this site. The hours of operation are Monday through Friday from 6:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. And there was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval for three years and will reevaluate in three years. We're also recommending that they continue to be DHS certified and that they continue to comply with the home occupation portion of the zoning code, which regulates that there's no signs be placed on the property. Our city manager is also recommending approval. Item 1.1A is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against? If not, the recommendation is to approve the ordinance 4536.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Then we go ahead and approve ordinance 4536 and also the conditional use permit. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Go on to item B.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1B is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for the sale and onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages at Tortas del Jack. The address is 4001 South Sherry Road, Suite 350 of Lot 1, Sherry Land Plantation, Grove Tech Center, Number 2. And this is a planned unit development and the applicant is Tortas del Jack LLC in care of Ruben Garza. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On August 9, 2017, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is a 1,500 square foot restaurant within an existing plaza located at the southeast corner of San Mateo and Sherry Road. The applicant has been at this location since March 22, 2016, and is requiring a reconsideration of their CUP. The hours of operation are Monday through Sunday from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. And three employees manned this operation. Parking is held in common and there are no churches or public or private schools within 300 feet of the subject site. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval of the CUP for a period of now until April 12, 2018, at which time the applicant will have to renew their TABC license and conditional use permit. Our city manager is also recommending approval. Item 1.1B is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against? If not, the ordinance is 4537 and the recommendation is to approve it.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the ordinance and also the conditional use permit. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item C?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1C is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for the sale and onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages at El Rodeo Restaurant. The address is 622 North Conway Avenue, Lot 1 of Block 106, Mission original townsite. The property is owned C3 and the applicant is Roberto Carlos Romero. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On August 9, 2017, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is located at the southeast corner of Conway and Leonajo Street. And this is a family restaurant. It was first granted a CUP about 12 months ago. There have been no issues. The hours of operation are Monday through Sunday from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. They have early hours. A total of six employees run this operation and the property is within the central business district, thus it's exempt from any parking requirements. There are no churches or schools within 300 feet of the subject site. And during the P&amp;Z meeting, there was no public opposition and the board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is also recommending approval for a period of now until September 18 of 2018, at which time the applicant will have to renew their TABC license and conditional use permit. Our city manager is also recommending approval. Item 1.1C is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against this request? If not, the ordinance is 4538 and the recommendation is for us to approve it.
More to approve.
We do have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the recommendation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item D?
Thank you, Mayor. Item 1.1D is a public hearing for a conditional use permit to have a drive-through service window at Boquitas Snack Bar. The address is 2515 South Colorado, Suite 11, of Lot 2, Block 2, Santa Lucia Development. The property is owned C3 and the applicant is Guillermo Cortez. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On August 9, 2017, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Colorado and Taylor and the applicant is proposing to lease the suite within this commercial development to have his Mexican snacks with a drive-through service window. And access is through Taylor or through Colorado. There's two 24-foot driveways, one on each side. The days and hours of operation are Monday through Sunday from 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. And a total of four employees will run this operation. With regards to parking, there are 74 parking spaces that are held in common in this commercial plaza. Landscaping also meets code. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is also recommending approval with the one-year revaluation clause and that the CUP not be transferable to others and that they comply with building, fire, and health codes. Our city manager is also recommending approval. Item 1.1D is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against? The ordinance is 4539 and the recommendation is for us to approve it, so.
I'm going to approve, Mayor.
Second, Mayor.
Do have a motion and a second to approve the recommendation and the ordinance. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Go to item E.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 1.1E is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for Buddy's Drive-Thru at 501 North Inspiration Road, Lot 61, Georgiana Estate subdivision. The property is owned C3 and the applicant is Verónica Peña. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On August 9, 2017, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Inspiration Road and Cuesta del Sol. Primary access to the drive-through business is off of Inspiration Road, but there was also a second entry point off of Cuesta del Sol. The P&amp;Z granted this CUP and it's been in existence for over a year now and there have been no issues at this location. The days and hours of operation are Monday through Friday from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. And Sunday from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. And Sundays from 12:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m. A total of six employees run this operation and there are a total of 30 parking spaces that are held in common. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is also recommending approval for a three-year period and that the CUP not be transferable to others and that they continue to comply with all building, fire, sign, and health codes. Our city manager is also recommending approval. Item 1.1E is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against? The ordinance number is 4540 and the recommendation is for us to approve it.
Move for approval.
Second.
Do have a motion and a second to approve the recommendation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item F?
Thank you, Mayor. Item 1.1F is a public hearing for a conditional use permit to construct a new 140-foot monopole telecommunications tower on property owned ARI. The address is 3419A, North Trosper Road, and the applicant is proposing a 50-by-50-foot leased area of Lot 41, Bellwood CO Subdivision C. And the applicant is APC Towers LLC, working with T-Mobile. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On August 9, 2017, the Planning and Zoning held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is located approximately half a mile north of Tumal Road along the east side of Trosper Road. APC Towers is proposing to install a new 140-foot tall self-supported tower with the associated ground equipment. The location has been chosen by T-Mobile to fill in gaps in their network and to expand their cellphone coverage. There was no public opposition during the PNC meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval of the new tower. Staff is also recommending approval, subject to the installation of a mesh or a solid buffer along the fifty-foot perimeter, and that they allow other cellphone towers to also co-locate onto the new tower. Our city manager is also recommending approval. Item 1.1F is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against?
Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Can you explain a little bit what you mean by co-inhabit?
Co-locate.
Co-locate other towers.
Yes.
Are we employing one tower, or are we employing multiple towers?
No, this is just one tower, but other cellphone providers can connect their antennas up on top, and they could lease the space from T-Mobile.
So it's not additional towers of a hundred-and-forty feet?
It's not additional towers, no. It's just additional antennas on top of this tower. But this is a way to prevent multiple towers from being everywhere. They can just.
Rent from there or whatever.
Yes.
But not additional the hundred-and-forty footers?
No.
Ten of them right next to each other?
No, no, no. It'll just be one.
Okay.
Tall tower.
Thank you, sir.
The ordinance is forty-five forty-one, and the staff is recommending, so is planning and zoning. So we do need a motion to approve.
So move, Mayor. Second.
Do you have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item G, Mr. Garcia. You have a public hearing?
Yes, sir. We have a couple of public hearings. Mayor Council, good afternoon. Item 1.1G is a public hearing on our twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen preliminary budget. The city's preliminary budget for twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen was presented on July twenty-four, twenty-seventeen, and has been made available to the public for review at the city secretary's office and at the city website as required by law. This is the opportunity for the citizens' submission to speak on the preliminary budget.
So this is a public hearing?
Yes, sir.
No action is required?
I'm sorry?
No action is required right now?
No, no action, ma'am. Just a public hearing.
It is open up for the public hearing. So I don't know how long do you want this public hearing to last?
A minute.
There you go.
I've not studied the budget. Virginia Townsend, sixteen oh three vintage. I've not studied the budget, but I want to say I appreciate everything that's being done for the parks. If you all have been around Albright Park, now there's beautiful lamps all around it. Our parks are being upgraded a lot, and I really appreciate it. It's going to make a very big, you know, difference in the city. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we know we did reduce the tax levy by one penny, and we also increased five people to work on the parks, which is about half a million dollars worth of salaries, and five more, we hired ten people, which is about another million dollars, both. So we're not only reducing one penny, but we're also adding more people to work in the parks and work in the streets. As you know, they're working on doing a lot of paving around the city. But it's money that was appropriated, and still we were able to go ahead and reduce that budget by one penny. One penny is not very much, but, you know, as the years go by, they amount to quite a bit. So far, it's nineteen pennies since I've been here, so it's a big help for a lot of people. So we will go ahead and close the public hearing.
Yes, Mayor. Also, item 1.1H, moving forward, we do have another public hearing. This is a public hearing on the proposed property tax rate. In accordance with the Texas Property Tax Code, the city council must propose a tax rate for the city of Mission and publish notice of property tax rates no later than September the first. The notice of the property tax rates, which included the proposed tax rate of point forty-eight sixty-two, was published in the Progress Times on August eighteen, twenty-seventeen. Again, this is an opportunity for the citizens to speak up on the proposed property tax rate. There has been a reduction of one penny. We went from forty-nine to forty-eight, and that is the recommendation for this year. Again, this is a public hearing, sir.
We'll open it to the public for the public hearing, and if anybody has anything to talk about the proposed property tax rate of zero point forty-eight sixty-two. So it's open for anybody that might want to give us some comments on the tax rate. I know that the cities are compared to our tax rate. Like for our in Edinburgh, they're at sixty-four and sixty-seven, so you can see that we're about twenty cents less than they are, and hopefully we can continue doing this for the next four or five years. If there's nobody to come and speak on this proposed, then we'll go ahead and close the public hearing.
Thank you, sir.
And we'll go on to item two-point-one. We had a city council meeting on August the fourteenth of twenty-seventeen, and we need to dispose of this minutes, so we need a motion to approve the minutes.
I want to approve.
Second.
Yeah, motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. We also have to acknowledge the receipt of the minutes that we had for our boards. Speed Memorial Library Board had a meeting on June the thirteenth of twenty-seventeen. Planning and zoning commission had one on June the twenty-eighth of twenty-seventeen, and also had another one on July the twenty-sixth of twenty-seventeen. Zoning Board of Adjustments had a meeting on January the eighteenth of twenty-seventeen, March the fifteenth of twenty-seventeen, and June the twenty-first of twenty-seventeen. The Mission Historical Museum had a meeting on June the nineteenth of twenty-seventeen. The Mission Economic Development Council, or Corporation, had a meeting on July the eighteenth of twenty-seventeen, and the Mission Economic Development Authority had one on June the twentieth of twenty-seventeen. And also, the Mission Redevelopment Authority had one on July the twenty-fifth of twenty-seventeen. The tax increment reimbursement zone had one on July the twenty-fifth of twenty-seventeen. All these boards met in those days, and we need to acknowledge their minutes.
I want to approve.
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second to acknowledge the minutes? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. I want to note that all these people that help us on these boards, we need to appreciate how much we have, how much help we have, them meeting every month, and staying. We haven't had one person resign from any of our boards, so I'm very proud of the people that are on those boards, and the way they meet, and the way they conduct themselves, and give us some good recommendations for us to run the city. We go on to item four-point-two. Mr. Garcia, it's a homestead exemption variance.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Council. Item four-point-two is a homestead exemption variance for the west half of the north, sixty-five feet of Lot forty-eight, Mission Acres Subdivision. The address is nine seventy-four Truman Avenue. The zoning is R-one, single-family residential, and the applicant is Jose Quintanilla. This is a homestead exemption variance, and what we've seen along Truman is that most of the families there have two homes on the single lot. The homestead exemption would allow them to do this without having the subdivide. Water and sewer are available along the west side of Truman, and the PNC recommended approval. Staff and city manager are also recommending approval. Item four-point-two is now before you.
This has been approved by planning and zoning?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Any questions for the council on the? But everything is going to be hooked up to the sewer?
Yes, there's a sewer line along Truman Avenue. They're going to hook up to sewer and to water along Truman Avenue.
When are they going to hook up?
During the construction of the home.
They're going to construct the home?
Yes.
One home?
One home, yes.
Can you show the wider aerial? Or maybe it's not an aerial, it's, okay.
Okay, this. We need a motion that staff is recommending not to approve it.
Is that really Holland? That's not Holland, is it?
No, that's, it's actually a typo. That's actually Los Ebonos Road.
Okay.
That's J.C. Park that you see there with the walk trail.
All right, that's what was throwing me off. Okay, thank you.
We do need a motion to approve the recommendation.
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second to approve the recommendation from planning and zoning and our staff? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Four-point-three, Mr. Garcia.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I come before you to present item four-point-three, approval of supplemental work for work authorization number one with LNG engineering related to the Inspiration project. Traffic signal warrant study and design for the Inspiration and All-Two intersection. Estimated cost for study is thirty-three thousand five hundred and forty dollars with seventeen cents. Staff and city manager recommends approval.
The recommendation is that we go ahead and approve the request.
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the recommendation? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor. I also have item four-point-four, approval of work authorization number twenty-nine with LNG engineering related to the Mission Event Center project. Construction material testing for Mission Event Center. Estimated cost is about ninety-six thousand six hundred and twenty-one dollars with forty cents. Amount paid to date is sixty-three thousand ninety-one dollars with sixty-four cents. Estimated amount to complete the project is thirty-three thousand five hundred and twenty-nine dollars with seventy-six cents. Staff and city manager recommends approval.
I move for approval as presented.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second to approve the recommendation by our staff. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Dominguez.
Mayor of City Council, on item four-point-five, the Mission Police Department is requesting approval of a resolution supporting the submission of a grant to the Office of the Governor for the twenty-eighteen City of Mission Body Armor Grant Program. The grant will allow us the opportunity to purchase a total of ninety-three rifle-round bulletproof vests for patrol officers, bridge officers, traffic officers, and SWAT. The total amount of the grant request is thirty-nine thousand three hundred and eighty-one. There is no cash match required for this grant. Staff and the city manager recommend approval of this grant. And again, this is for the submission of this grant to the Office of the Governor.
What's the resolution number?
Fifteen twenty-one.
I move for approval.
Second, Mayor.
Fifteen twenty-one. We do have a motion and a second to approve resolution fifteen twenty-one, and whatever comes with it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Item four-point-six, Mayor and City Council, is authorization to accept the twenty-eighteen STEP comprehensive grant from the Texas Department of Transportation. The STEP grant provides funds to increase seatbelt enforcement, speed enforcement, and DWR enforcement throughout the city. The grant award is seventy-nine thousand five sixty-seven and seventy-five cents. There is an in-kind match of sixteen thousand five seventy-five and forty-three cents. Staff and the city manager recommend approval of this grant.
We do need a motion to approve the grants.
I want to approve.
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Item four-point-seven, the Mission Police Department is requesting authorization to accept the FY twenty-eighteen Local Border Security Program Grant from the Office of the Governor's Homeland Security Division, Grant number eighteen dash two-nine-nine-two-six-zero-three. The LSBP grant provides overtime funds for Mission Police Officers for the purpose of patrolling and investigations throughout the city of Mission. The grant amount is two hundred and five thousand dollars. There is no cash match required by the city of Mission. Staff and the city manager recommend approval of this grant.
Move for approval.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second to approve the recommendation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We've got to congratulate the governor for sending us so much money.
Yes, sir. Thank you, chief.
We do get a lot of support from the governor's office, almost on every agenda item, so we have every two weeks. We do have some kind of money coming in from the governor's office, so we've got to commend him for doing so much for us. Tax collection report, Ms. Vella?
Yes. Item four-point-eight is the acceptance of the tax collection report for the month of July two thousand seventeen. Our total tax levy was twenty million forty-five thousand three hundred and twelve dollars and eighty-three cents, and the amount of collections as of the end of July was nineteen million two hundred and fifty-nine thousand four hundred dollars and eighty-eight cents, which represents ninety-six point zero eight of the tax levy. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Do we need a motion to approve the recommendation?
So move, Mayor. Second.
Do you have a motion and a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Four-point-nine.
Item four-point-nine is the acceptance of the July two thousand seventeen financial statements. Our total adjusted beginning fund balance was forty-three million two hundred and ninety-eight thousand five hundred and eighty dollars. Total revenues for the month was twelve million two hundred and ninety-seven thousand nineteen dollars, and total expenditures were sixteen million five hundred and forty-nine thousand five hundred and forty-one dollars, leaving an ending fund balance of thirty-nine million forty-six thousand fifty-eight dollars. Total assets were a hundred and forty-three thousand, I'm sorry, a hundred and forty-three million eight hundred and seventy thousand and seven dollars. Total liabilities were sixty-one million three hundred and twenty-five thousand seven hundred and seventy-two dollars, and total net assets were eighty-two million five hundred and forty-four thousand two hundred and thirty-six dollars. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I move for approval.
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the financial statement? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Four-ten.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item four-point-ten is the authorization to award contract for stop-loss insurance. GF Financial Group solicited bids for stop-loss insurance to cap any excess costs exceeding one hundred thousand for medical and prescription costs. GF is recommending that we award to Houston Casualty Company, and staff and city manager recommend approval.
We need a.
I want to approve, Mayor.
Second, Mayor.
Do you have a motion and a second to approve the recommendation? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
You do not have any unfinished business? Mr. Garcia, you needed something on six-point-one?
Yes, sir. We want to just inform the council and the public in general that we have five firefighters that are over in the area of Houston helping out with the relief. I know that our fire chief sent a man of three on Saturday and a man of two on Sunday. One of the groups is responding to the Texas Task Force One. They're going to be in the, they're actually stationed at the Fort Ben County Fairgrounds in Rosenberg, Texas, and from there, they're being deployed in different areas of Katy, Houston, and so forth, and they're going to be doing both water rescue. The second group that went out there is the, under the Emergency Medical Task Force, there's two firefighters, and they're going to be responding to a group of people that are going to be under some tents, and basically a portable mini hospital where they're going to be checking for vital stats and helping the people that are coming in for any sort of assistance. So we're happy to announce that we're part of the relief, and that we're out there helping with some assistance. I know that our inspections department also got some calls this morning, and we're going to be sending a couple of inspectors to the Houston area to assist in some of the inspections, making sure that the homes are safe before the families come back into their homes. So I think that's very important, so they can have a safe environment to be in. Secondly, the city of Mission is organizing a community-wide relief center. We're not doing this on our own. This is community-wide. We teamed up with police officers, firefighters, business owners from the downtown area, where we have two locations, one here at the Mission Parks and Recreation Building, and the other over at the Movies Night, which is a twenty-seven-hundred block of Conway. And so the city of Mission has two tractor-trailers that are ready to be filled up with, you know, food, with water, with cleaning supplies, hygiene items, any items that can assist the families. And we're urging the community of Mission to come out and support the efforts. We're going to be out at these two locations till ten PM tonight, and again tomorrow from from 8:00 to 10:00, and throughout the week until we can fill out those two tractor-trailers and move them up north to the Houston area for some relief. So we're really excited about that, and I think this is the opportunity to show that we're part of a team that are ready to help and hoping that the people get some relief over in the Houston area. So just want to inform the council and the public on that.
Thank you. Anybody that would like to donate something, just go ahead and contact our city here or the fire department. Anybody that would like to contribute money, I think you should come over here and donate it to the, I've been called either or whoever's going to be around here, but I know there are some people that are going to, are willing to come up with some checks. You could probably deposit them at Mission Helping Hands. From there, you can write the checks to whoever over there. So thank you all very much. I don't have any comments. We do have an executive session and do need a motion to go in.
Mayor, I move that we go into executive session pursuant to BTCA Government Code Section 551.001, Mayor. Second.
We do have a motion and a second to go into executive session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Mayor, I move that we reconvene.
Second. Do you have a motion and a second to reconvene? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We now have a recommendation that we're going to be acting on. Go ahead.
Yes, Mayor. This is item 7.1, Enforcement of Delapidated Structures, Legal Requirements. If the council is inclined to take action, we would need a motion making a finding that the following real properties pose a substantial danger of injury and/or an adverse health impact to the people and surrounding buildings, and therefore authorize a city attorney to pursue legal action pursuant to Chapter 54 in order to protect the public health and safety regarding the following real properties. The first being 815 Leon Street, Mission, Texas, Erdal, Lot 17, Block 4. Second property being 401 North Dunlap, Mission, Texas, 78572, Lot 7, Block 76, Mission Original Townsite. The third being 1542 West Business Highway 83, Mission, Texas, 7572, Mission Acres, East 75 by 125 of the south, 125 feet of Lot 5, and west, 50 feet by 125 feet of Lot 6. And the fourth property being 905 Reynosa Street, Mission, Texas, East Side, Lot 8, Block 6. And the fifth being 2312 North Citrus, Mission, Texas, Big Orange Lot 8, RS Lot 254, John H. Sherry Subdivision.
Okay, we need a motion to...
So move, Mayor.
Right, you can go forward.
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. So that's all we have right now?
I move for adjournment.
Do you need a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second to adjourn? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.